Wasn't on the school board, but I was clerk, so I had to make sure all of that stuff was done.
I forgot to bring my code book back.
I'll call the meeting, daughter, and we have the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Huffman.
Yes, here.
Here, I think, I didn't speak cloud.
Ms. Dixon.
Here.
Mr. Good.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Seaworth.
Here.
And Ms. Thambaugh.
Here.
Okay, we're welcome, Barbie.
Thank you.
That's welcome.
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 And we also want to recognize Grace Norwalk. Thank her for her ten years of service. We have a letter here for each of us to sign, and I'll just read that so it's in the minutes. Dear Grace, as your friends and co-members of the planning commission, we would like to thank you for your service to the town Luray over the years on the planning commission. Your dedication toward confirming that each application complied with the town code and was in the best interest of the town as a whole was evident at each meeting. Your continual cheery disposition at the meetings also allowed them to be a pleasure to attend even when agendas were long or controversial. We wish you well in all you do and want you to know that you will be missed. Sincerely, each of us that served with Grace on the planning commission.
I second it.
Very nice.
Very nice.
Very nice.
Okay, do we have any additions or anything to delete from our agenda for this evening? If not, we will follow the agenda that has been sent out to us. We have the minutes from our March the fifteenth meeting. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Motion to approve.
I'm going to motion accept as presented.
I second.
All of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We don't have anybody signed up for the citizen comment period. We will move to the public hearings. The first one is a request for a special use permit to operate a lodging house at 210 Allison Drive, tax map number forty-two A seventeen one eighty. It's in the planned neighborhood development zoning district. And as usual, we have the definition for a lodging house. We have the conditions that we have been considering for each of these applications. I'm going to run down through those, but I'm only going to do it one time because we've got the other two applications. So, those conditions would be, if approved, the guest shall not stay more than fourteen days, occupancy of no more than six guests at any one time. Number three, off-street parking is required for all guest vehicles. Four, there can be one identification sign on the property not exceeding four square feet on either side. Five, meals, if provided, shall be served to only guests renting the bedrooms in the dwelling. Number six, the applicant must obtain the town business license and remit the transient occupancy tax and meals tax. Number seven, the special use permit shall not transfer upon sale of property or membership interest composition of the holding company. Number eight, must maintain commercial general liability insurance policy for short-term rentals for a minimum limit of five hundred thousand dollars from a Virginia licensed insurance provider. Number nine, they must maintain a registry showing names, home addresses, and dates the renters of the transient visitors. Number ten, prior to operation, they must obtain an updated certificate of occupancy from the Page County building official. There must be one working smoke detector in each bedroom, and carbon monoxide detectors shall be located on each floor. At least one working fire extinguisher shall be installed and maintained. Commercial uses other than expressly permitted in the town zoning ordinance are prohibited, and they must comply with the noise ordinance, which is in chapter fifty-eight in the town code. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, but we don't have anybody signed up to speak on this matter, but I will officially open the public hearing. And again, there's nobody signed up, so I'll close it. Discussion from the commission members.
This is the third, fourth, which one, we have four out there now?
This is the, we approved our first one last month.
Yeah.
This is the second.
This is the second of the three tonight that are there, and you'll have one next month. Gotcha.
And the town council approved the last one, we sent to them, and they did have a discussion about it, didn't they?
Yes, sir.
And they still moved forward.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and make the motion if you're ready.
Sure.
Sure. I'll move the planning commission recommend the approval to the town council for the special use permit to operate a lodging house at 210 Allison Drive in the planned neighborhood development zoning district from Sharon Rodriguez with the conditions indicated as presented.
Second.
Second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Seaworth.
Yes.
Ms. Thambaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Huffman.
Yes.
The second public hearing for this evening is a request for a special use permit to operate a lodging house at one seventy Allison Drive. The tax map number is forty-two A seventeen one eighty-six, and this is in the planned neighborhood development zoning district. The information that we always have, the application.
Hey, Steve, mine says two-ten still in the paragraph of it. Now, up above it says one seventy Allison, but in that paragraph it says two-ten Allison.
It's one seventy, yeah.
Copy and paste.
Okay, so again, we have the application, the tax map info. I think most of these that we've received so far have been for the three-bedroom, two-bath properties. Which this one is one. I guess it's two and a half baths. Okay, again, we didn't have anybody signed up to speak at the public hearing, so is there any other discussion?
I think we talked about last month, how many public parking spaces are there? Like, common parking spaces or?
Common park, well, the requirement for the development is two and a half parking spaces per townhome. And each, well, majority of the townhomes have a driveway and a garage, which is two. End units have two-car driveway, and so, I don't know off the top of my head, but I believe all total, right now, there's probably twenty onsite parking spaces for the development.
I think it was mentioned last month, too, that there is onsite parking and then parking across the street.
Right.
Right, that's what, I think that's what we were just talking about, wasn't it? There.
I was just going to ask a question. How many townhouses are on Allison Drive, twenty?
In that neighborhood, probably a little higher than twenty, probably twenty-four maybe.
Yeah, that just saw this in the picture.
Okay.
And they've got the existing duplex here, but there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
And do we know if they've all been purchased?
My understanding is that all of these have gone to closing this week.
Okay, other discussion? Ready then for the motion?
I move that the planning commission recommend approval to the town council for the special use permit to operate a lodging house at one seventy Allison Drive in the planned neighborhood development zoning district from Edward Dumitrach with the conditions indicated as presented.
Second. And roll call, please.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Seaworth.
Yes.
Ms. Thambaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Huffman.
Yep.
And Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Okay, the third application is for a special use permit to operate a lodging house at one fifty-eight Allison Drive, tax map number forty-two A seventeen one eighty-nine, and this is again in the planned neighborhood development zoning district. Once again, we have all of the information that I think we need. Application, tax map, layout of the property. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for one fifty-eight, but then I'll also close it because we don't have anybody signed up to speak on this application. Any questions or discussion on special use permit twenty-three oh nine? We're ready, we can have a motion.
I move that the planning commission recommend approval to the town council for the special use permit to operate a lodging house at one fifty-eight Allison Drive, tax map as indicated in the planned neighborhood development zoning district from Munish Kana and Two-K Group LLC with the conditions indicated as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Seaworth.
Yes.
Ms. Thambaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Huffman.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
And Ms. Dixon.
Yes.
Those are the ones we had for public hearing for this evening. Have some items for discussion that will come up at our meeting in May. The first one, we're requested to discuss application for a special use permit to install a manufactured home on parcel tax map number forty-two A three A forty-nine. This is in the R-three high-density residential district. It is permitted in the code under section four oh two point three E, and the applicant is seeking to replace a manufactured home that was destroyed by fire a few years ago. We have the conditions for the installation of a manufactured home. We have the application, tax map info. Any discussion at this time?
In the application, it says to put a modular home, but it's a manufactured home?
Effectively, yes, it's not a, it's, it's not the, it doesn't meet the threshold for a single family, but it is allowed by special use permits. The discussion with, I think it was Cardinal Homes that you talked about?
Clayton Homes.
Clayton, I'm sorry, yes.
Any other questions or discussion?
Got two tough turns to get in there, don't it? They only have two tough turns to get it down there. The first one.
They got machines.
Yeah.
Turns from the back, they got machines that turn from the front. Because they have one above at five Hilltop Lane. Have to be.
If they got that one, then you got the one down at Derwood's, that turn, and then it's smooth sailing that, well.
Right next to it.
Yeah.
Our Claudine's home, same.
Probably just turn and go up, and I guess, wasn't Derwood's the other house, and then straighten it up and go down, then put it down in there. See, I like watching stuff like that.
Get a tub of popcorn.
Get a tub of popcorn, yeah.
I got a feeling if it's approved, that it'll get placed in there. There'll be a way.
They'll find a way.
Yep. And we do have these requirements here, but we'll take a closer look at those next month, I think they're probably pretty standard. Any other discussion at this time? Okay, we'll take it up in May.
There's the water, the shore, the, how you say it, the electric poles, there's two of them. One on the far side by the graveyard, and another on Andrea's property right there. Everything's there.
And looking at the tax map picture here, it looks like a pretty good size lot.
Been on that lot for twenty-four years. This is the first time in twenty-four years that we're going to finally try for the future to have something there.
Be our sleigh riding spot when we was kids.
So the fire happened twenty-four years ago? Oh, no, there was, there was.
Died in nineteen ninety-four.
Okay.
When my brother took over the land, I don't know why, they decided to, the house just call a fire, and ever since. Been that long. My name was middle fry. Ain't nothing been that sense, so now that we getting older.
Okay, any other discussion this time? Consider this again next month? Okay, the other item, next item for discussion is a special use permit at one seventy-eight Allison Drive. And again, we have the information here, but it'll be back before us and advertised for the May tenth meeting, early in May. Any discussion on that? All right, then we have discussion on a code amendment to section five sixteen that deals with accessory dwelling units. Steve, is there any important information on this one?
Well, council had looked at a draft of an amendment developed by Councilman Webb. The changes that he's proposed are in red on the third page. The document included in that, basically what it's looking to do would be to allow through a special use permit, an accessory dwelling unit in the business, and then in all of the residential R-one, R-two, R-three, and R-four zoning districts. It would allow, it would require any ADU to meet the setback requirements of, for the accessory dwelling unit, it would require the building, the ADU to meet the building code. It would only have no more than two individuals residing in the ADU. It would also have a maximum floor, floor area of nine hundred square feet, or half of the interior of the main primary dwelling. And then and then it would specify that an ADU cannot be used as a short-term rental unit.
Good thing that's in there.
Right.
So, if there's any other concerns that council might have as far as placement or other issues, that's what the council's hoping to hear from you all.
Will the special use permit transfer if the property is sold?
It can, or it can't, if there is the ability to include the language that it does not transfer, if that is a recommendation from the planning commission, we can consider that.
I think that would be a safeguard.
The part there about the R-one, for R-one zone lots, an accessory dwelling unit shall be an existing and permanent detached structure constructed prior to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Okay, in the other zoning districts, would it stay before two thousand eighteen?
No, in the other zoning districts, you could construct a new one. It's simply that they wanted to not allow new construction of an ADU in the R-one district. But if there was an existing garage that had a second floor, or there was an existing cabin in the R-one district, that it could then be used as an accessory dwelling unit. But it doesn't allow for new construction in the R-one.
Okay, this is for discussion, anything else on this tonight?
And again, we presented this to you, also, it'll be for discussion after your meeting. Ideas or concerns that may come up between now and May.
Okay, is there anything else we need to be brought up to date on? We do have one application here that came in too late for a childcare center in the basement at Main Street, fifty West Main Street.
Correct, the Blue Ridge Bank Administration Building. The town code requires in the business district a special use permit for childcare facilities. We have asked a number of questions of the applicant specific to the number of students anticipated, the required parking drop-off, number of staff, the anticipated size of the facility within the basement, and other questions. So if there's concerns that the planning commission might have, please let us know, we can do those questions with the applicant.
Is that the bowling alley? The basement at fifty West Main?
Yes, yes.
Bowling alley, okay.
I was thinking that, too, yes.
Glad you asked that.
So. The state has a number of requirements for their licensing process for daycare facilities.
Through the Department of Education. And again, if that would be one of the conditions of the special use permit is that they must obtain all Department of Education.
I would think so.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Let's see, did everybody get a copy of this? Okay. Any other questions or discussions at this time? Have it come before us again for consideration next month. Steve, anything else we need to be brought up to date on?
If you have a chance on Saturday, the town's youth drought derby is down at the Park and Ride, it's always an exciting family time. It's always an exciting family time, so just get out and watch the kids go fishing. The memorial drive is paved and striped and open to traffic.
Looks nice.
Yep, it is a big improvement. The sidewalk is wonderful. The hospital is planning to extend a sidewalk to our sidewalk to allow them to walk through the campus. So, it is, it is a good project. And it actually, uh, we, council had to do a budget amendment on Monday because the project finished early, oddly enough.
Just right after our last meeting is when you had the presentation down at Ruffner Plaza. Grant.
Oh, the T-Mobile.
Yes.
The town was awarded, well, I'm sorry, the town and the Greenway Foundation were awarded a fifty thousand dollar grant from T-Mobile to fund replacing the existing pergola with a sunshade facility. We'll also be improving the concrete in that area. There's a number of joints that have, uh, that are uneven, and we've been, we're trying to make it much more ADA compliant at the site. So, we have ordered the sunshade. It's unfortunately a long lead item, so we probably will not see the project completed until probably the fall, but it is in the works, and and we're hoping to have a nice new facility there that everybody can enjoy by the end of the year.
Quite a few people using the ticting tables this past week, and I was walking back and forth, so that's nice, and it was it was one day, it was one between the bank and the
The foundations, uh, those tables were actually purchased through donations to the foundation, and if anyone is interested, um, they're always looking for folks that are interested in making a contribution towards some type of improvement, uh, tables and other things.
And that event was very well done.
It was well received, the Parks and Rec staff did an outstanding job putting it together. Daniel Alger, Daniel Bass. It was a wonderful celebration of an ice cream to help the town improve itself.
And turned out to be a beautiful day in March. Anything else, any other discussion? Okay, I think I mentioned earlier that our next meeting is May the tenth. Have completed our agenda, so we'll adjourn.